And, uh, welcome all. Thank you for joining us at the February meeting of the Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session for three hours. Apologies for the length of time that it took to get back out here. And as always, we are going to start with a report from the Clerk of Actions Taken in Closed Session.
Mr. President, there are no actions to report on.
Really, we were in closed session for three hours. Just can't prove it. All right. If you would, if you would all please rise and join me in the invocation to be followed by the pledge led by Trustee Jay. Last, when, last Thursday, we dedicated the new campus police facility at Irvine Valley College on the same day there was another, uh, shooting at a college campus in the United States. So I would like to take this opportunity to offer just a moment of silence for those who were killed or injured in any of the recent spate of shootings, and also for the men and women in uniform who protect our students and protect our communities throughout the state and throughout the country. Thank you, and if you'll join us for the pledge with Trustee Jay.
Address the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I'm going to turn to the Chancellor now for an introduction.
Thank you, President Wagner. I'd like to introduce to the Board and the members of the audience a new Dean at Irvine Valley College, Dr. Kathleen Schrader. She received her doctorate in nursing science from UC San Francisco, and she will be the new Dean for math sciences and engineering. Trustees, would you please join me in welcoming Dr. Kathleen Schrader? Welcome.
Welcome aboard Dean Schrader. Thank you, Chancellor. At this point, I have a few people wanting to speak, and so we will turn to public comments. I'll begin with Professor Agass. Oh, I gotta turn your microphone on.
I don't have the microphone.
No?
No microphone? I don't need a microphone?
You can. It's on.
No, I don't want a microphone.
All right.
I didn't come here to be on television. You've got it all wrong. At any rate, my name is Gina Agass, and I teach Spanish at Irvine Valley College. And I'm just here tonight to tell you that I fully support the efforts of the negotiating team to secure the faculty a fair contract, and that I feel very privileged to have the people that are on that team negotiating for me. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Next up is Professor Tsang.
Good evening. My name is Beatrice Tsang, and I teach Spanish at Irvine Valley College. And I'm just here today to say that I also fully support our negotiating team. I want you to know how much I appreciate their efforts, and I urge you to work with them to secure a fair contract for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Professor Boron to give both her own statement, and I understand one from Professor Long. So we'll extend your remarks.
My colleague in humanities and languages and my English co-chair, Louis Long, asked me to tell you that he could not be here tonight because he's teaching a class at IVC. We have sure ones. I put on your, in front of your desk, there's a folder there, a blue folder. Hi, my name is Brenda Boron, and I'm proud to teach writing at Irvine Valley College. I'm especially proud to teach at IVC right now because IVC is one of seven community colleges selected for a study of community colleges with higher-than-expected transfer rates. The State Chancellor's Office Commission Study is being conducted by the Transfer Leadership Center Project under the direction of Dr. Andrea Serbin. Last week, as a part of this study, I was invited to participate in a faculty focus group. Before our focus group meeting, I invited my students to help me prepare for the focus group discussion by answering this question. Why do you think IVC has a higher-than-expected transfer rate? I have duplicated for you the responses I received. You will know that without exception, one of the contributing factors students mentioned is the dedication of IVC's faculty. And students commented, almost without exception, that they work hard because the faculty works hard. That is, the faculty and the students act in good faith because we have a trusting, supportive, mutually beneficial relationship. The teaching that we do at both colleges is a testament to the good faith of the faculty. Good faith toward our students, good faith toward our colleges, good faith toward our Board of Trustees. During our last contract negotiations, the Board acted in good faith, ratifying a contract that reflects genuine respect for the faculty and the work that we do. I'm here to ask that you once again demonstrate the good faith you have in the faculty. We are grateful that you often publicly acknowledge the fine work the faculty does, and we are asking that you extend that acknowledgement to include a speedy resolution to our contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you to all. And at this point, we will move to reports of the Board. Let's begin with Trustee Jay.
In light of the fact that we've just spent three hours in a closed session, I have no Board report this evening.
Good man. Thank you, sir. Trustee Padberg.
And I will echo that. No report this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to extend my hearty congratulations to the IVC community. It was a pleasure to participate in, be with, the Irvine Valley College community for the opening and dedication of the new police and warehouse facility. And I'm sure those facilities will well-serve the IVC community for many, many years to come. Beautifully done. Likewise, I would like to say what a pleasure it was since we last met to have had the privilege of joining with our academic colleagues at Pepperdine University. It was my privilege to join them for their annual gathering honoring the visit by United States Supreme Court Justice John Roberts, and to hear his remarks in the Southern California community. Thank you.
Sir, Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. Well, I'll have a short report. I know we had a long closed session. I did attend the Futures Assembly in Lake Buena Vista, Florida, and Trustee Mather attended. And I know I'm speaking to my fellow trustees, even though I sent you an email with the documentation for the public and for those in the audience. I just wanted to say, Dr. Mather was the Chair of the Futures CEO Commission. It was a wonderful event. Again, we were invited to the pre-conference dinner where we had a chance to, around the room, those of us in attendance that were non-doctoral students at the University of Florida, which is what a lot of this is about, to give about a two- or three-minute, any words of advice you'd like to give to these doctoral students that all intend to go to work in community colleges around the nation. Many of them are already working in community colleges as deans, vice presidents. It was a fascinating, fascinating event. The conference itself consisted of thirty community colleges making presentations. The categories were workforce development, planning, governance, and finance, and instructional programs. And I tried to step in and out of as many sessions as I could over the days. The winners were workforce development, the University of Hawaii Maui Community College, which does offer a bachelor's science degree now, by the way, at a community college campus in partnership with the University of Hawaii. Brookdale Community College from New Jersey won in planning, governance, and finance. That was a five-year impact study of the New Jersey Coastal Community, Communiversity, pardon me. And under instructional programs and services, the Community College of Baltimore County. There were ten nominees in each county. The thirty nominees, ten in each category, rather, were the presentations we all attended. And our Chancellor Regu, how many did you actually go in and judge? The whole group of CEOs judged.
Ten.
Ten, at least ten. So, a lot of hard work. Those winners will return next year and give a one-year update on the progress they're making in the area. And it sounds like, Professor Boron, that this program, the Transfer Leadership Center, might be something we'd want to get a nomination to the Futures Assembly for, and share our successes. Will do. So, it was wonderful. Trustee Wagner mentioned during his invocation, once again, it's a weekly incident now. We're getting shootings, shootings on campus nationwide. Violence, it's now, it's now become a fad. Virginia Tech last year started off thirty students killed and a suicide by the shooter. We've talked about the safety issues, the safety measures. It's time this Board takes some actions, voted up or down, but we need to get off the dime, and we need to make a decision on our proposal to upgrade campus safety. That may be security cameras, it may be alert systems. It's a lot more than just cameras. It's a lot of tools for our campus police. I don't want to wait until another shooting on this campus.
Thank you. In view of the hour, I have no report. Trustee Milchick.
I just wanted, just have a few comments. First of all, I wanted to thank, to find Spanish professors from Irvine Valley College and find English professors from Irvine Valley College. I noted that one of the people that actually wrote about this was Kathleen Lupe. And I'm good friends with her parents. She's one of seven children, and her father's name is Dr. Lupe, and her mother's name is Janie Lupe. Her father actually worked with, can you hear me?
I apologize, my microphone was not on. I, I wanted to say that I noticed, first of all, I wanted to welcome the two finest Spanish professors from Irvine Valley College here. Dr. Tsang and Dr. Agass. And I wanted to welcome the finest English professor from Irvine Valley College, Brenda Boron, Professor Brenda Boron. And I wanted to mention that in the packet that Professor Boron brought to us, Kathleen Lupe was a student that wrote this professor. And we're good friends with, with her parents, Dr. Lupe and Janie Lupe. And there are seven children in the family, and they're sending all of the girls to Irvine Valley College. One of them started at Notre Dame and wasn't happy there, and decided to come back and go to Irvine Valley College. And they've had fabulous experiences at Irvine Valley College. I was, I was delighted to be able to shake one of their hands when they graduated from Irvine Valley College. And they are definitely Irvine Valley College supporters, and since he's a physician, I think we should get them on our foundation. I think that should be something that Al Tello should do. And I think they would support Irvine Valley College in that way. I also wanted to mention, a few days ago, I heard Charlie Rose, on Charlie Rose, that the new president of MIT, who happens to be a woman, was speaking about post-secondary education in this country and abroad. And it was a fabulous presentation. And I not only loved it because she was a neurobiologist, and that's my dream, I'm a biologist, but I'd love to be a neurobiologist. But she talked about how exciting it is to be discussing higher education and promoting higher education, and really was, was just inspirational to me. And just wanted to say that I would like to follow in her footsteps to be able to promote really fine post-secondary education here at, at both of our colleges.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Thank you, War President. Just a couple of brief comments also. Like Trustee Fuentes, I also attended the dedication of the Irvine Valley College Campus Safety Building. My congratulations to Glenn on what I think will be a terrific facility and add much to that campus. Also enjoyed a very entertaining evening that I attended with both President Wagner as well as our Chancellor at the City of Tustin inaugural dinner, which was a very humorous induction of Mayor Jerry Amante. And of course, congratulations to Jerry on becoming the mayor of the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reynard.
Good evening. Just a brief update. I also attended the police, the opening of the police facility. And the other day, the Chancellor and I were on Channel Six's Leisure World. Both him and I were interviewed. I also communicated with both ASG Presidents of IVC and Saddleback. And just a brief update on their events. IVC's homecoming is the twenty-second. Saddleback has, has a lineup of activities from the blood drive to a pizza eating contest and Awareness Week. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Chancellor's report?
Very briefly, I'd like to share some observations about the community colleges Futures Assembly Conference that Trustee Williams and I had attended. The theme at the conference was change or die. That is something that Darwin said many, many years ago, that is not the strongest of the species or the most intelligent who survive. In fact, it's the one who is most responsive to change that survives in life. A couple of different speakers, keynote speakers, talked about some concerns about the low academic standards in K through twelve, generally speaking nationally, that we need to move from why to what and how we are going to adjust, how and what we are going to do in order to prepare our students in the increasingly competitive world society. Also, that China has more honor students than we have students in the United States. That was an interesting piece of fact. And also that we need to move from specialized job training programs to preparing students with multi-skilled programs so that they are more flexible in their career opportunities. Overall, one great point that was made at this conference was that our educational institutions, particularly of higher education, need to create greater capacity for innovation. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me inquire, have there been any requests of Board members for reports? Written requests?
None.
All right. No written requests? Any oral? She's all right, very well. At this point, we will move to the rest of the calendar. I have been asked to, and am happy to, advance Item 6.1 and its following items. 6.1 requires a public hearing, and in view of the lateness of the hour, let's, let's give an opportunity for this hearing so we don't keep people too long. And let me ask the Secretary, are there, well, let me first close this meeting and convene a public hearing on the subject of the request for waiver of the Education Code for Development at ATEP. All right? Are there any requests from the public to speak? All right? Hearing none. We will recess this session, this public hearing, reconvene the session of the Board, and advance Item 6.2, which is the request for waiver that follows the public hearing we just had. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Discussion item, discussion. Seeing none, let's vote on Item 6.2.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think we have to have a formal motion to close the hearing.
Well, is there a formal motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve 6.2?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All right. It is, it's been pointed out to me that this is a resolution, although we don't have for all of Board members, and traditionally, we have not voted on these types of resolutions by roll call. Nevertheless, let's do a roll call so that we have no question about it.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. That matter passes unanimously. All right. That passes unanimously. Let's go back to the calendar, and we will start at 4.1, which is a discussion item with respect to new academic and career technical education programs for all three colleges. And at this point, I believe we'll go to the Chancellor, who will turn it over to Ms. Serbin.
Yes. Let me just mention, this is the discussion topic for this month. Topic being the new academic and career technical education programs at Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and ATEP. And I believe the program information about ATEP was presented recently at a previous Board meeting. It is important that dynamic colleges that we have in our district, that they continue to be sensitive to the student needs as well as the community needs by paying attention to the development of new programs. And that's exactly what we have done. And we have considered in the development of new programs, a study that was done with Dr. Wallace Walrod of Orange County Business Council, who is the researcher. And not only he has done research studies for Orange County businesses, but also for South Orange County in particular. So with all of that in mind, I would like to turn it over to our Vice Chancellor Serbin to talk about the new programs, our Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College in particular.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be back. I was really worried that I will never be in the light of a presentation to the Board, so I'm happy that it's happening again. And this presentation is really one of the topics that I think goes along with some of the comments that were made earlier by Brenda and others about how both colleges are continuously looking for innovative ways to respond to the community and to the students, along the concepts that most effective community colleges are student-focused and community-based. So trying to respond to what students need to get prepared for the workforce and what the community needs in terms of what we should provide to them in order to have, to grow as businesses in our community. And you have received this study in, I think, one of the updates that Chancellor Mather provided to you. This study really was meant to help us as part of what normally environmental scanning does for our institutions, the type of community needs assessment that informs which are the areas with most growth in our community. And these are the six areas. This study also, not only that, it identified the employers and their expected growth over the next five years, but also the study looked at what are the abilities and aptitudes that the employers that we have in our area in these six major industries are expecting from our graduates. And this information is helpful in developing programs that will actually produce the graduates with the necessary skills to be effective once they join the labor force. I just wanted to mention briefly that program development on the credit style is actually a very arduous process. It takes developing proposals that go both to our regional occupational deans first for their review and approval. And once our regional occupational deans approve it, we are allowed to submit it to the state. The regional group that we are under in Region Eight here is quite competitive, meaning you cannot proceed with a credit program if any of the colleges in the LA and Orange County feel that you are doing something that they already have. So you have to be very compelling in convincing these other deans in all the vocational programs in all community colleges in LA and Orange County that you are not competing with them. And that's quite a skill. And our deans in the vocational areas from IVC and Saddleback are doing a very effective job in this regard, along with Mary Williams, and who is representing the tech prep area from Saddleback. Also, they have a very particular template that you need to follow, which is kind of similar to what the state requires. And the state requires tremendous validation that any new program is actually making sense in the broader scope of the vision and mission of each college, and that it's aligned with the strategic plan of the college as, as well as with the requirements in the state. It's also important to be able to provide enrollment projections and making sure that there is clear evidence provided that the proposed program is actually responding to market demands in the area. And this is where this kind of studies from the Orange County Business Councils are, are very helpful. So, both colleges offer a wide array of programs already, and the two Vice Presidents of Instruction will talk in more detail about the most current and newer programs developed at each college.
Current at Saddleback College, we have more than one-hundred-ninety-three degrees and certificates. And I'm going to address the, the six programs that have gone through our curriculum process, and five of them have already gone through the LODL, which is the local, the Los Angeles-area workforce development consortium for approval. The very first one is the Rapid Digital Manufacturing Program, which came as a result of the NSF grant that Saddleback College administers throughout the nation. It's a twenty-seven-unit certificate, and it also includes an associate degree program. The letter that we received from the state two months ago made it very clear that this is the only program of its kind in the whole country. And it also is the result of the fact that Saddleback College is the National Center for Rapid Prototyping Technology in the United States. It propelled Saddleback College in the headlines of most newspapers some months ago when students using the medical modeling process of rapid prototyping were able to help surgeons in San Diego perform surgery before, let me go back to that. What it did was it allowed the surgeon to see a recreation of the skull of a soldier who was injured in Iraq. And using MRI pictures and using rapid digital prototyping technology at the college here, we were able to develop a model of that skull up to size, and the surgeons were able to know exactly where the wound was, and they had their instruments ready so that as soon as the wounded soldier landed, they were able to immediately perform surgery without having to go back and take more pictures and look at how, how seriously wounded, injured that soldier was. So this is one of the results of rapid prototyping technology, and we have currently the only program in the whole country to do that. The next program that we have going on right now, which has already gone through curriculum and which, we're starting the courses in the fall of 2008, and the program is going to be officially approved for the fall of 2009, but the courses have already gone through curriculum, and we're going to start that in 2008, is the Entertainment and Theater Technology Certificate Program. As it says here, it will prepare the students for a career in the entertainment industry. There is a great demand for such careers right now, especially at Disney World, Disneyland, Disney World also, cruise ships, hotel entertainment, and Southern California, especially Orange County, is an area which really requires a lot of people in that field. The third program is a program that Saddleback College has had for some time, known as the Child Development and Educational Studies. But what we have done right now, we've added a new associate degree, which encompasses the whole field of child development and child education. And also what we need to point out here is that Saddleback College has, is one of two colleges in the whole state of California to have a program that is fully online for child development and educational studies. So as soon as we have our general studies online, we have two courses left in general studies to have online, we will have this whole entire program. Right now, the major is entirely online. It's one of two programs in the state. And by the fall of 2008, we will have an entire program. The whole associate degree will be online in that program. The next one is the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation. We already have this program, but what we are doing now is we are having the program accredited by the National Foundation. The result of this national accreditation will make our students, our graduates, more competitive in the marketplace. competitive in the marketplace, and will also allow us to receive more cars from the National Association of Dealers, because they usually give those cars for training purposes to programs that are recognized and accredited by the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation certification. And we currently are working on the curriculum, and in the fall of 2008, the next semester, we will have a program that is fully accredited by the NATEF. The next one is the Medical Lab Technician Program. This program used to be called in the past Medical Technologists, but in 2005, the state approved a new program called Medical Lab Technician, and that was approved in 2005. But the regulations and the licensing regulations for this program were only approved by the state in December of 2007. Saddleback College did not waste any time on that and immediately jumped on that program and has the curriculum ready. And we are going to be going to the Health Department for approval of the program. Our courses are ready to go, and we are in the process of hiring a full-time faculty, a tenure-track full-time faculty, to head this program. But the part-time faculty and the nursing faculty are right now getting everything ready to go to the state for the approval. We will be the second program in the state to be approved to deliver this associate degree in medical lab technology. What usually those, the candidates who pass this program, what they do is they usually run tests, they diagnose, they run tests for the diagnosis, treatment, and prevention of diseases. They don't read the results per se, but they do perform all the tests. And the final program that Saddleback College is looking at is the Biotechnology Program. We have faculty in the Science, Math, and Engineering Department that have already gone to San Diego to attend meetings on the preparation of such programs. Cal State Fullerton offers a bachelor's degree in biotechnology, and we are looking to work closely with Cal State Fullerton to make this program a reality. Dean Wright and his faculty are currently working on drafting the courses that will be part of that program. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to report on the progress that Irvine Valley College is making in developing eight new programs, seven of which are credit programs. And let me start by saying that the development of these programs, we're starting with the Office of Career Technical Education and Workforce Development under the leadership of Dean Susan Cooper. She also heads up our VITIA Grant Program. Using resources from VITIA and other sources, she has been able to assemble various teams in discussing the development of several of these new programs, including the Institute for Women in Trades Technology and Science, which is primarily a grant-funded outreach program, which can expand into new occupational avenues, giving women much greater access to workforce opportunities. Professor Bob Urel and Dean Susan Coram have been working with Dean Cooper to develop the Bank Officer Program, which has been a very exciting program sponsored primarily by Wells Fargo Bank. Oh, thank you, Rajan. Sorry about that. Professor Amy Stinson has been working with Dean Cooper to develop ideas for teacher training in the area of ocean science education. And I personally would like to go on some of their field trips, because I think they'll be a lot of fun. Raghu, I'm sorry, Professor Rupa Mather, sorry, Chancellor, and I'm sure you get her emails from time to time, and she gets yours, which are probably more interesting, I might add. But she and Professor Colin McCoffey have been working on the Computer Forensics Specialist Program. And that's a particularly exciting area, because as CIM enrollments, as computer information system enrollments fall, we need to do retraining not only of the faculty, but reorient the curriculum to support new occupational areas, and this is an example of that. One of the programs that I personally have been involved with recently is the Digital Media Technologies Program. We're going to relocate that program into the new Business Sciences Technology and Innovation Center with brand-new lab space. Professor Antoinette Geldon has been working with, again, Professor Bob Urel, and developing the platform, it's a Macintosh computer that can do both PC and Macintosh applications. So the technology is even far more advanced than what we're used to, and that's a great use of resources. The Health Information Technician Program is also a grant-funded program. We're awaiting to hear back from Sacramento on whether or not the funding has been approved. But Professor Dixie Massuro and Professor Roland Rodriguez of the Biology Department have been working with Dean Cooper to develop this program. In addition to that, the Paralegal Legal Assistant Program is under discussion, and Professor Bob Urel, whose name appears again and again, in part because he's the academic chair for Business Sciences, and Professor Frank Pangborn, who teaches business law, are working on developing that program, which we had at my last college, and the need for this seems to be very great. In addition, Physical Therapy Assistant is being developed, and Professor Michael Bennett of the Disabled Student Services Program and Dean Heath Shackelford have been involved in writing the analysis and preparation for that. In summary, I look forward to working with Irvine Valley's, Irvine Valley College's Academic Senate and President Wendy Gabriella to discuss further in consultation about these programs. We're going to the Senate in the coming week, and I look forward to that dialogue, which is an important step in the development process. In addition to that, we're launching our feasibility and needs analyses, which will bolster the arguments on whether or not these target dates, which are here primarily for discussion purposes and for mapping out purposes, whether or not these things are feasible to do at a particular time or not. As you may understand, the facilities question is a big one, in addition to that budgetary support. A lot of information is being prepared in concert with Vice Chancellor Serban to go to the Region Eight Occupational Deans and argue for the, make those compelling arguments for these programs as the data support them. And then lastly, these programs are under consideration for inclusion into Irvine Valley College's strategic plan. And so all of these issues will get sorted out, and I'm looking forward to launching several of these at the right time, in the right place, and with your money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctors all. Let me ask Chancellor, comment?
Yes, just one comment, that you have just heard the names of several different deans being mentioned who have provided leadership in the development of these programs under the guidance of the Vice President for Instruction as well as the college presidents. But we also need to recognize the role that faculty have played in all of these various departments where these programs originate, and they play a significant role, as it is appropriately their role, to develop curriculum, develop programs, and we applaud their efforts in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is a discussion item that was very thorough, and there's more information in our packet, but let me invite the board, any questions or comments? And I see trustee Melchiker.
Thank you so much.
Microphone. Okay, go ahead.
My microphone was on, but it didn't work, so. Technology again, okay. It sounds like there's some very exciting programs being planned at Irvine Valley and Saddleback College, and I'm excited about it, and excited about being brought up today with it. Several of the programs I wanted to comment on, I know that we had a paralegal program that was very successful at Saddleback College, but what happened was the professor left, and he was actually a Harvard-educated attorney that was in charge of our paralegal program, and the program was closed because he left. And I just wondered, I know that Frank Pangborn teaches real estate and is a very fine real estate teacher, professor, I'm sorry. I was just wondering if we need a law professor to be in charge of that, or a JD, you know, someone who has a juris doctor, to be in charge of our legal assisting program? I have actually several friends who have gone to legal assisting programs. One is going to the school at UCI. And how would our program be different from the program at UCI? I'm sure she would prefer going to Irvine Valley College, because it would be $20 a credit hour versus several hundred dollars a credit hour. So how would our program differ, and how soon would it start? And do we need a professor of, do we need a juris doctor to be in charge of the program or to work with the program? Those are three questions about that program. The Marine Science Program, do we have a marine science professor at Irvine Valley College? I know we did at Saddleback College, but I'm not sure if we have one right now. We do? Okay. And certainly that would be an exciting program. I took limnology, which is freshwater biology, when I got my master's degree, because this was by a lake, but we're by the ocean, so marine biology makes a lot of sense. So I'd like to hear more about these programs as they develop, and those are the questions that I will ask right now.
Well, let's start with the question about paralegal. And the program differs from UCI's. It's primarily an occupational training program designed to be a year or two in length, whereas UCI, of course, is a baccalaureate-level program. It eventually, the need for professors will evolve and be developed as the student enrollments. Often, these programs start with adjunct faculty, but lawyers, JDs. And then the faculty prioritization process, and we have to assume that all of this is going to fit into the strategic plan and the budgeting process, but perhaps a year after the initiation of the program, once approved, then the faculty prioritization process kicks in, and I'm sure if that is a successful program in terms of its enrollments, the need for that will bubble up to the top, and it will be relatively high on the priority list. Regarding the oceanography, we do offer oceanography courses. And again, if we don't have an oceanography professor who's full-time at this, we can, we do have adjunct, but there's a large brain trust that we can tap into to develop these programs, both full-time and adjunct faculty.
Seeing no further requests speak, thank you all. Very fine presentation, we appreciate it. At this point, we will turn to the consent calendar, and let me ask, are there items trustees would like removed from the consent calendar? And I am going to poll 5.15 for your information. Any others? Trustee, well, you're not pushing your button.
Well, I did.
Oh, it's not, nothing's shown here. Well, all right.
The machine's broken.
The machine's broken. Go ahead.
5.11, 5.12, 5.13, 5.14, 5.18.
All right. Push, okay, I'll repeat those in just a second. Trustee Fuentes make a call. No, nothing is showing up here. All right. So at this point, folks, raise your hand if you want something pulled. I saw trustee Fuentes first, and then trustee Wang.
No, I was going to move approval of the remainder.
Okay, hang on just a sec. Let's get trustee Wang.
If you could repeat those items.
Oh. 5.11, 12, 13, and 14 by trustee Padberg, 5.15 by me, and 5.18 by trustee Padberg. All right. Any others? All right. I've heard a motion and a second to approve the balance of the consent calendar. Let's vote on that. And that's not working either. My whole system has now crashed. Okay, well, let's go home.
Second?
All right. All right, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, and thank you all now. Trustee.
How much is voting?
Your vote, well.
Can I just vote by hand?
All right, we'll vote by hand. All in favor of the balance of the consent? All opposed? Abstentions? Matter carries unanimously.
You're back in working order.
I still, well, all right, good. We're there, although I have nothing on my screen as to who wants to speak, so we're not entirely in working order. All right, if you would clear that, please, Madam Secretary. Very good. All right, 5.11. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, these items, this one and the others that I pulled have to do, except for 5.18, have to do with ATEP, and I believe they are extremely important. They're, the first one, 5.11, is for a contract, and this was an RFP, so other people competed with this. So I believe that this is something that we should acknowledge and see if the, for it, I do intend to support it, but see if there are any particular, you didn't ask for comments, but perhaps there were some that we missed, but this is an important item. We will be approving a contract, a large contract, for $226,000. Oh, is that a messy, misprint?
$226,000.
But $226,000, yeah, finish one. My mic is off.
We're having technical difficulties. There we go.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in fit, wow, okay. Let's see if our voting system is working.
Looks like it is.
Oh, do you want, I'm sorry, before we vote, trustee Melchiker.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it was broadcast, but this is an item for $226,000 that I believe is going to come from our basic aid fund. So I would like an explanation on what this is for and why we need it.
Deputy Chancellor?
Yes, in the district's development of the ATEP site, and in order to receive approval and entitlements from the city of Tustin, we need to have studies done in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and other requirements, and these are specialized consultant services. This is a firm that would provide those services, and then the board would be acting and adopting the findings of these studies.
Yeah, are these, following up with the discussion we had earlier today, are these, is this firm going to be giving us advice on if we're in environmental compliance?
Yeah, they would do the study in accordance with the Environmental Quality Act, and making findings and making recommendations, and the board would be acting on those.
Okay, well.
And we would be submitting that to the city of Tustin.
Well, in light of this, I think maybe we should revisit some of the things we discussed earlier today. Okay, but I'll be, I'll approve this.
All right, the board's information, I think the system is working again, so if you press, if you want to speak, go back and do it, and trustee Padberg.
Just for clarification, the outline has an incorrect figure. The item shows the correct figure. The outline shows it at $22,600, as opposed to 22,26,000, 226,000. So.
The outline of the agenda.
The column is in our place.
Okay.
All right. So it is 226,000.
226,000, correct.
Trustee Fuentes.
I wish to make the comment that I feel in a box. I think the board, the district, is in a box on this matter. I don't know what purpose it would serve to not allow it, because I think that our team needs it to move forward. But philosophically, I would like to say that I think it's a pathetic thing that local government has come to a point where one agency of local government who works for the same taxpayers are put in a position that this level of money has to be spent for consultants to advocate a position to another element of local government. There's something wrong with our system, and this is an example of it in hard dollars. It is a, is an example of the trough at which consultants feed. It is a... It is a, an example of why we have the growth of government even on the most local level. And I think it's very unfortunate. Having said that, I don't know that it would accomplish much not to approve it.
All right, let's vote on the items. Matter is approved unanimously. Item 512, also polled by trustee Padberg, also related to ATEP and the contract.
Again, my same comments. This is for $112,000, $112,000, and it's for civil engineering services for the ATEP project. And again, it's a contract that we will be needing to approve, so I will certainly support it. But I'm assuming that there was a competitive process, RFP on this contract as well?
Yes, there were three firms that submitted proposals. This is a, one of the services that under the code we don't have to go to bid for, but we routinely do. And my recollection is this was the lowest-cost proposal.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, I would like to comment that the selection of Somus Engineering is an outstanding one. It is a firm whose reputation in the Orange County community goes back for decades and has well-served this Orange County community for many years. We could not be selecting a better civil engineering firm.
Thank you for the comments. We'll vote on the items. Matter carries unanimously. Item 513, a contractor lending to ATEP for dental services, polled by trustee Padberg.
And this item is for parking lot improvements. This, again, is a smaller item, $49,000, just a mere $50,000. And I would imagine we also had a competitive process on this. Is that correct?
I think on this one, this was a firm that we were using for consulting on that site for a current project, and we got a proposal from them. I don't believe there's another proposal on this.
Okay.
Were there discussions? All right. Matter carries unanimously. Item 5.14, polled by trustee Padberg, donated equipment with respect to, again, to ATEP.
Thank you. I think this is a very important item. I assume this is all of the equipment out of the kitchen, which we got in the ATEP transfer. And we are donating it to a very good charitable cause, the Main Place Christian Fellowship. So I think it's very important that the public realizes we are doing this, and hopefully they will make very good use of it. And so I fully support it, but I didn't think this should be something not recognized publicly.
Thank you for the discussion. All right. Let's vote on the items. And matter carries unanimously. Item 5.5, I pulled at the request of the chancellor, passing out to the board, slight revision, and the chancellor would like to comment on this item.
Well, just very briefly, that yes, we have a slightly revised recommendation on this agenda item. And I believe Brandy Delano, who's our district director of facilities and purchasing, would like to comment on the change. Brandy?
Last Wednesday, after we had, is it on?
No.
Says it is.
Right.
Try it now.
Nope.
All right, we can hear you. Go ahead.
After I submitted the agenda, I reported last Wednesday, we had a meeting with the contractor who indicated some resistance to window testing that's taking place over at the ATEP. It might be, I think it's on now, the contractor's responsibility. So we made a determination that the recommendation for reducing the retention 50% is not in the best interest of the district. So we separated that item out from the recommendation and are now only recommending that the notice of completion be approved. When we file a notice of completion, then we have a 35-day period that the notice of completion is recorded. And during that 35-day period, what we'll do is we'll evaluate the value of the cost for the window repairs and retain 150% of that value, which is what your recommendation indicates.
Trustee Padberg.
So my understanding is that you will, of course, be doing the testing. Is it going to have to be done during that 35-day period of retention, or will it be done before that?
The testing is complete.
It is? Okay. All right, thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
Move the recommended option.
All right. Moving seconded, seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Lights are on. Did you get your request to speak back to?
Yeah, I've got the request to speak back. Lights are on, I'm just going to keep pushing it. All right. What happened? Passed unanimously. Wonderful. We're on a roll. And all the technology seems to be in order. 5.18 polled by trustee Padberg. This is the revised fees for Saddleback and IVC.
Move and seconded.
Trustee Padberg.
I pulled this item because it does, of course, revise several fees. It all increased. There's no decrease in fees, of course.
No, that's not true.
And, I'm sorry, where is that?
It's not a lot of money, but for example, there's a decrease of $2 in one, there's a decrease of $3 in another. One's eliminated at the very bottom page, $10 is eliminated completely, top of the second page.
I see that there are eliminations. I'd like you to point out the decreases.
Sure. Take a look at kinesiology and athletics. It goes from eight to five. I think I saw another one in here. As I say, it's not a lot, but there are a few.
Then I would propose that we divide the question. I'll support those that are decreases and the ones that are reducing, completely reducing the fees, but I will not support an increase in fees.
Is there a second to dividing the question?
Point of order, I don't believe that you have a choice. I will not vote, I can't vote on any part of the item unless it is divided.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. Which ones do you want divided?
That would be the biology, the kinesiology, where is that, when you pointed that one out? The emeritus birds of Southern California, the social behavioral science careers in tech prep teaching, and I believe that's.
And chem four.
And pardon?
Chem four.
Chem four, chem four. So if you would pull those out, and we could vote on those all in one, I can support those, and then we can vote on the other items. I will not support.
All right, happy to accommodate. We'll divide those out. Let's vote on the ones where there are increases. Passes with one no vote. Let's vote on the questions that were divided and polled in lump, some.
So moved.
Oh, it's already been approved.
And that carries unanimously as well. I believe that concludes the consent calendar. 6.1 and 6.2 are mercifully behind us. Let's go to 6.3, which is the institutional membership, and in particular, the Association of Governing Boards. This came back to us after last month with some additional information, in particular the question, how long have we been members? Appears that we've been members for the last five years. And we've also gotten some information that this item, this membership is cheaper than the competitive organization that we previously belonged to, ACCT. So with that, are there any other questions?
Move and seconded.
Moving seconded, and trustee Padberg.
I will point out that most of our other community colleges belong to ACCT, that this board for many, many years, many years, participated in that. They have a marvelous program, and that is what I believe we should do, and I will not support this item.
Further discussion? All right, moving seconded, let's vote on membership in AGB. And the matter carries with one no vote. Item 6.4, the matter's here for approval with respect to the Veterans Tribute Tower. All right, I'll entertain that in a minute. All right, seeing no further discussions, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Point of order from trustee Williams.
Move that we extend the meeting until 9:30. We're into the curfew now.
Moved in seconded, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Thank you for that. I had 10 in mind, and I don't know why. All right, 6.5 also here for approval, and the question before the board, do we wish to nominate anyone for the Marion Burgesson Award? And trustee Fuentes, I hear a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, not debatable, and seeing no opposition, let's go ahead and vote. Item is tabled, no nomination forthcoming. All right, at this point, we are at item 6.6, a matter here for review and study, a number of board policies with some potential revisions. They are not being adopted tonight. This is an opportunity to comment upon them or make sure you have an opportunity, well, you have an opportunity, and if you wish, avail yourself of it to raise questions or issues with administration as to any of these policies. Let me ask, I assume they've gone through the shared governance process?
Yes, they have.
All right, thank you very much. Questions or comments as to these matters? Trustee Padberg.
It would appear that 5405, the student complaint policy, completely removes the student complaint policy. There's a new one, however, 5600, well, no, I don't see a new one. I don't see that there is a process. Is there, what number?
I will call upon deputy chancellor Porter to comment on it as he chairs the board policy committee.
Okay, right, this is being deleted because it's already covered in another policy.
And where is that?
And the other policy.
5600?
It's in here, actually. It has to do with discrimination, harassment complaints.
4,000.5.
4,000.5.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Trustee Fuentes?
Move to accept for review and study.
Second.
All right. And trustee Milczek?
Yes, thank you. I noticed that board policy 3105, which has to do with audits, was there a former policy that had to do with audits, or is this a new policy?
This is a new policy.
I noticed in the past that it's been the custom of the board to change audit firms every three years because we didn't want staff to become too friendly with our audit committee to make sure that, you know, everybody's being honest and above board. And I noticed that on the agenda earlier today on the consent calendar that we approved to use the same audit committee that we used for the last three years, for another two years. Now, I, being a member of the audit committee for the last, at least, three years, I don't have any problem dealing with it. And they're very terrific ladies, and I know they do a good job. But I just wonder, I'm just wondering if we should have a policy that will tell us that we, perhaps after a certain number of years, maybe three years, maybe five years, that we should change audit firms just to ensure that there is honest auditing of all our staff? And certainly, I don't, you're very honest, and I know all of our staff are very honest, but just to make sure that there isn't too much of a cozy relationship between our audit firm and our district staff.
I'll guarantee you, we're not cozy.
You look very friendly.
There hasn't, there hasn't been a policy about the number of years. There's been a practice, and it has been five years. And so the contract that you were looking at tonight was a five-year contract with the possibility of a two-year extension if we wanted it. Normally, we don't. Normally, we would go out and change auditors. We would get proposals from other auditing firms. But there's two matters that are ongoing that we've been working very closely with this auditor about, and we wanted the continuity. One was the 50% law and their review of all of our entries and what's appropriate and not appropriate. The other is the implementation of GASB 43 and 45, which is ongoing right now. They've been giving us, monitoring what we're doing, making sure that it's okay. We're about to go into that, into the next year, and we just wanted to have that continuity. And at the end of these two years, we'd be changing to another firm.
Well, I agree. I mean, I've been, as a member of the audit committee, I've been meeting with them, and they certainly are experts in the GASB policies and in the 50% law. So I agree that they have been invaluable in their assistance to our staff in these areas, and the suggestions that they've made over the years have been excellent, and we weren't dinged on anything this year. So, you know, everything came out 100% clean, and the other suggestions they've made over the years have been implemented, and they've been corrected. However, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't have a policy that says after five years, we should change audit committees? Because, you know, perhaps even for future boards, this would certainly mandate that audit firms would be changed after five years. And I'm asking the question of administration, and perhaps RAGU, and perhaps the academic senate, or whoever else is, helps to approve these policies, that perhaps this isn't a good idea just for that, because it will make us change audit firms after five years, even though we like our audit firm now, and they're great.
Well, we can, we'll certainly do what the pleasure of the board is, but I think we also need to bear in mind whether there is a problem. Certainly, we want to solve something if it's a problem, and so far, this has not been a problem, so.
Well.
But I'll leave it to the pleasure of the board.
Well, I have to say that, you know, I answer to the taxpayers. And if there's any fiduciary impropriety that's going on in the district or the colleges, you know, I'm the one that's going to take the responsibility, and the entire board. So it falls upon our shoulders to make sure that everything is clean, and everything is honest, and everything is done with integrity. So I, for one, feel more comfortable if perhaps there is a, we do change the board policy to say that every five years, we get a new audit firm, just to prevent anything, anybody from being too cozy. And I have utmost confidence in all of our staff, that everybody is honest and above board and ethical, and I've worked with them and know they are, but for future boards, let's give them the incentive to change audit firms every five years, just to make sure that things just go and keep going on and on and on, and people getting cozy, and something, fiduciary impropriety results, and the board takes the hit for it, and we deserve it, because we haven't been certainly monitoring what's going on at the college in the best way we can.
Are you making a motion to amend this policy?
Yeah, I'm making the motion to amend the policy to change audit firms every five years.
I'll second that.
All right, the matter's been moved and seconded. There's some further discussion. And my display shows trustee Williams, but I believe it is trustee Lang who is requesting to speak. You are next in line. Go ahead.
I guess two items. One that I'll defer until after we discuss this item, but specifically related to this item. I do think that there ought to be something in the policy that speaks to rotation of the auditing firm. I think trustee Milczek makes a very good point along those lines. However, these I do think that there ought to be something in the policy that speaks to rotation of the auditing firm. I think trustee Milchekar makes a very good point along those lines. However, these items here are for acceptance for review and study. I think that there's adequate time for trustee's remarks to be considered, and that to come back to us in the form of a revised policy. And I'm not certain that, we may not want to think about the suggestion a little bit longer in terms of whether we want to put a specific timeframe in there, provide something more general that provides for regular rotation of the audit firm, as opposed to pass something now to be incorporated in a policy that's going to come back to us for review, it's going to come back to us for final action.
Well, okay, a couple of things. Let me turn back to trustee Milchekar to respond to that. But of course, we could always, number one, vote down the motion tonight. We could vote it down when it comes back to us finally, and next month, or whenever these are final. I mean, those are, those are two options, nothing is set in stone. Trustee Milchekar?
I withdraw my motion right now, because, but I do think that the time to look into these policies is when they're for review and study, they're for review and study. Next time, they'll come back for approval. And that's not the time to say, we don't like this and don't like that. The time to say that we wanted to look into is when they're here for review and study. So, I would like a report from our fiscal department to give us the pros and cons of auditing, of how often we should change audit firms, and to ensure that the board is making sure that everything is above board, and that we have, no one is even tempted to do anything dishonest. I know that you're not, but just to make sure that this is done in a proper way. So, I would like recommendations to come back, and I'm not, I'm going to withdraw my motion right now. But I'm uncomfortable with it right now, with no, nothing in it that says how often we have to change audit firms.
All right, well, and that's a fair request of administration, and I'm sure they'll come back to us with recommendation. I have trustee Jane X, is that correct? I just don't trust the board up here, go ahead.
Working?
Display.
Yeah, there it is.
I trust the board.
But it was on. Okay, my concern is that when these board policies come back to us, I guess there's probably 15 to 20 of them here. And trustee Milchekar was alluding to the fact that we really aren't monitoring this stuff very closely. And I think when we have 15 or 20 to come back to us for approval next month, that our review of those policies would be superficial or at best rudimentary. I would rather see them come back in groups of maybe five or six, and not 15 or 20 at a time, and split this list up into about three parts, and give part of it next month, and part the following month, and part the following month, so that we really do look at them. Most of us don't take the agendas home, we give them back that same night. And we do pull out the part that we have a great interest in, usually it's financial stuff. But this would bear taking home of us tonight, so that we look it over before the next meeting, and then we have five or six for approval, and five or six the second month, and five or six the third month. I prefer that, but...
Thank you, trustee Padberg?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything about what trustee Jay just said, but I think it's a very good idea. I think it is very superficial when you get such quantities. I was going to make an amendment to trustee Milchekar's motion, which is not in order at this point, since she withdrew it. I think it's probably sufficient to give direction to staff to come back with a revised policy. I know that at least there are three of us at this point who would recommend that we have a language in there that would rotate it. And so, I'll just leave it at that, saying that that's my direction on this one, particularly the policy. But I support what trustee Jay is saying. I think it's a disservice to this board to pass policies 20, 30 at a time.
Trustee Lang?
Another alternative, of course, is to talk with administration, the chancellor, which I have done on several of these policies, where I suggested some, either some minor wording changes, or questions that I had regarding some of the references that were included in the policy. And I'd certainly encourage the other trustees to follow that pattern as well. There is one in particular, though, that I think is worth talking about, in my opinion, and it has to do with board policy 3100, that's before us tonight, in which we are specifically providing for, I think, a longstanding guideline that we have used in the past, which is unrestricted general reserves of no less than 6.5%. And I certainly think that has been a very prudent guideline on our part, given the uncertain economic times that we're in. I'm not certain that I wouldn't like to increase that percentage, frankly, maybe to a higher amount, say, 8%, and include that in the policy. So, I'll just throw that out there in case there are any other trustees that might want to remark about that.
All right, and trustee Williams?
Well, I see the members of the policy review committee here shaking heads and things. I think what I see is a need for board members to have a workable number to read, but I don't think 15 is that bad. But what I see is, here's my suggestion, we have X number of policies in front of us tonight for a review and study. But what we do is, we only give one chance for the board to kick them around. We get exposure one time, the next time, they're on for action. Why don't we do this? Why don't we have a policy for policy review, where we bring it in front of the board for the first reading for review and study? We have a spirited discussion like we do now. Bring all of these back a second time, one more reading, second reading, the third meeting, we approve them. But next month, there could be another eight, or 10, or 15 for the first reading. So, we don't slow down the work of this committee. Otherwise, it's going to take two years to review all the policies. So, you can keep on track with the policy review, the committee I'm speaking to, bringing these things to the board. But we give two readings before approval on each group of policies. So, next month, we can say trustee Lang's comment about what you just mentioned on one, trustee Milchekar's concern on the policy for the audit review process with the auditing firms that we retain. So, we get two looks at them before we approve them. Just a suggestion, might move things along a lot quicker. If possible, I don't know if it's permissible, but maybe if these are ready a week or two before the board meeting, maybe the chancellor can put them out. Of course, we can't email each other and talk about them. Get them to us a little early if you need to, but that'll keep the process going. Can I ask, the committee members here, I mean, how many more policies do you have to go through? A lot, okay, I hear the laughter.
Most of the book.
Okay, so, we can't slow down the work of the committee, but those that we need to review, if those are ready, maybe we can get them in a separate mailing to us to begin our review, only not reviewing in order to take action. So, maybe prior to the first reading, we get them a little early. So, but give them two exposures, approve on the third meeting, that's just a suggestion.
Yes, we will consider, of course, all the suggestions that the trustees are making. There are quite a few board policies, and we have been bringing these to you, I don't know if you remember, that we have been bringing quite a few of these each month for several years, and we are still not done reviewing all the policies. And it's kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. By the time we are done from one end to the other, it's time to start the painting process of the board policy review process. So, keeping all of that in mind, one of the practices that we have been following per CCLC guideline is, first of all, CCLC has developed board policies, sampled board policies for all the community college districts to consider. So, we consider our old policies, existing policies, CCLC proposed policies, changes in the laws and so forth, in bringing, or in making these revisions, and bringing them to your attention. And their recommendation has been to take a group of policies that are kind of interrelated, so that the board can see which ones, like the question that was asked earlier, why are we deleting this? Because we have another policy that takes care of the issue and so forth. But we can certainly bring a smaller number, we can do first reading, secondary reading. We'll kick this around, we'll discuss it, and see how we can integrate your suggestions, and also, at the same time, keep the process moving forward.
Want to make your motion?
On that change? Oh, no, we've got a curfew issue again. I move to extend the meeting until 9:45, and no longer, we need to get off this policy discussion matter.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstention. Trustee Milchekar? You're next.
I noticed a number of these policies have to do with fiscal, our fiscal policies, but there's some that have to do with refreshments, so they're not all the same. But I just think we should revisit the one that has to do with our, the amount that we're setting for our, the amount that we're setting for our, I think we should, the budget preparation one, we have to really revisit, because in light of, without going specifics, because in light of this being a really tough year fiscally, we might want to not restrict ourselves too much in any area, but we certainly want to meet the restrictions that were, are sent by the state of California and by federally, for, to ensure that we're following these particular guidelines, but maybe not make it more restrictive to us in a year that we may need to be spending more money. Thank you.
Trustee Padberg?
I don't see that there's any need to rush with approving policies. As the chancellor pointed out, it's going to be an ongoing process. For any number of years, since I've been on this board, policies were never looked at, and we're way out of date with statutes. So, I'm glad to see that it is an ongoing process, and I believe it shall continue that way. There is no time when you're going to be finished with all of the work of this district, including board policies. I certainly want to support what trustee Lang said about increasing our reserves. I think going to 8% is a little bit extreme. We're already having budget problems and crunches on expenditures, so I would certainly think that maybe 7%. I believe we're actually over 6.5%. Are we not, deputy chancellor, at this point?
We adopt the budget at 6.5%.
Okay.
And we end the year often more, because we don't spend all the money. But each year, we reestablish it at 6.5.
Yeah, so I certainly would support 7%, but I think it's something we need to look at in view of the current economic times. I will say that on 31.01, I will not support reducing approval by 2/3 vote of the entire board for this particular item, to transfer reserve funds. I think that's a very poor decision, 3.01. I do not agree also that deleting the policy for student complaints is fully covered by the one having to do with sexual harassment, and, or general harassment. So, I think it bears exactly what trustee Jay said, that we look at these carefully, and we do just not rubber stamp something that's put in front of us.
Trustee Lang?
The trustee Williams had mentioned earlier, and that being that it'd come to the board as much as three times, I would suggest perhaps that we might even streamline it a little bit more, and appropriately come to us for review and study the first time. But the second time, it could come to us for review and study or approval, and if necessary, then come back a third time.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes?
I just wanted to lend my support to trustee Lang's consideration of our prudent reserve, and express my support for its increase, so that those who will be working on this between now and the next time we see it will know that that is the opinion of several members of the board. And then, I would express my support for trustee Williams' adjournment at 9:45.
Trustee Milchekar?
I would like to, when this policy comes back, I would like to know what the statewide guidelines are for unrestricted reserves. Do you know that now?
Sure. The statewide guideline is a minimum reserve of 5%.
Well, it's a minimum reserve of 5%. So, if we go below 5%, we will be out of compliance. So, we need to give ourselves a little bit of cushion to make sure that we're in compliance. I don't see personally why we should increase our reserve now, because this is going to be a tough year, and why should we tie our hands? I, we may need to spend more money for, in the colleges, for our classes, to grow our classes. We may need to spend money for supplies, and we're going into recession right now, and we may need this money. So, I agree with a prudent reserve, but don't tie our hands by making the reserve so high that we won't be able to afford to keep the money in the classroom and to support our students.
Very briefly, President Gabriella?
Just real briefly to address trustee Padberg's question regarding the student complaint policy. The board policy covers the policy issues, and then the complaint procedures are going to be contained in the administrative regulation. And so, the complaint procedures will be in that document.
Thank you, trustee Fuentes?
I just can't let it go unspoken to that trustee Milchekar, our colleague, suggests that the state of California is a model for fiscal direction. Well, you're...
Never said that.
The direction of your concern certainly implies that, and I just think that's unbelievable.
All right, seeing no further discussion, and this is not an action item, administration, you have a lot to sink your teeth into, thank you. Item 6.7 is another public hearing, and this relates to the district's initial proposal to CSEA. At this point, I will adjourn the meeting of the board of trustees and convene a public hearing. To make the inquiry, has any member of the public asked to speak? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstentions, the public hearing is closed. Thank you all. Item 6.8, this is for approval, the academic personnel items. And understanding that there are no amendments or revisions, let me see if there are any requests to speak. Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.9 is classified personnel action items. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Seeing no requests from administration to amend, let's vote on the item. The matter carries unanimously. We are now at item 6.10, which is here for approval. This is the annual report on status of probationary faculty. And the board members, we are handing out yet again, a couple of, or a couple of pages with some revisions. And let me ask the chancellor to explain what we've got in front of us.
Yes, we have some additional information in the revised agenda item. I would call upon human resources vice chancellor King to comment on it, please.
Very briefly, we received additional information from the colleges regarding fourth-year probationary faculty, so we added that information onto the agenda item. Otherwise, it remains the same as you were provided in your board packet.
And so, we're clear, these fourth-year probationary are, will get tenure with this vote?
That's correct.
Because the item originally said there's no one up for tenure, and it turns out there's a dozen or more?
Let me clarify that they will get their tenure when they return to work in their fifth year.
So...
Which is this fall, which is coming up?
Yeah, oh, it's going on.
Right, they're all, okay, all right, trustee Milchekar?
I, you know, since, is this legal? Because it wasn't on the agenda that we're granting tenure to these faculty members. And I'm sure that we can, that they're excellent faculty members, but I want to make sure it's legal, that we grant approval, since it wasn't on the original agenda that was posted 24 hours ago.
The item was on the agenda. The individuals who were listed are not on the agenda in either case. And so, no, I don't see any particular problems, and our vice chancellor of human resources is nodding vigorously?
One more question. I'd like to ask both college presidents if they feel confident that these particular members be granted tenure now.
Absolutely, yeah, we have no problem with any of the faculty members denominated.
I'm willing to.
Same is true at Irvine Valley College.
Excellent, that's what we want.
Further discussion? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. We're at item 7.1, an information item. This has to do with the nepotism policy and let me, are there requests to speak, questions or comments? Seeing none, it's an information item, we will move on, thank you. 7.2, another information item, this is our basic aid report, questions or comments from the board and Trustee Lang.
Just doing a very quick analysis of this item. It appeared that we went from basic aid number of about 60.5 million from '05 to '06 to '06 to '07 to an estimated number of '07, '08 of about 42.5, a drop of about $18 million. Does that sound about right Deputy Chancellor Porter? And I guess my question is, is do these numbers reflect the latest estimates that we have from the, you know, assessor's office or whomever we get that figure from to tell us what our most current estimate for basic aid, ending basic aid is?
Yeah, we take a look at it when we receive the December and I guess it's April payment that we get from the assessors or the treasurer. You asked the, the main question I think had to do with, does it make sense that the amount of basic aid would be going down?
Well, that part clearly makes sense to me. What I'm, I guess what I'm concerned about is whether the bad news, all the bad news is kind of out on the table here or do we expect actually that it's going to be worse than this?
What we've seen so far is in line, in comparison to last year and in line with our projection, we think is right about on for now. We don't, we don't think it's going to be short. With regard to the first question, not only are property values not increasing at the same rate as before, but we had a big increase in enrollment and when that increase of enrollment took place, then the calculation for state funding goes up a lot, which means the amount of basic aid declines and so that's the big reason for the change in this current school year.
Okay.
Did I explain that correctly?
Yeah. You're done. Trustee Milchekar.
Yeah, well, that, I'm glad you explained it that way because we, that means that the board's policy to try to grow enrollment has been a very sound one because we're replacing our, the money that we've been receiving for basic aid with an increase in enrollment to make sure that we maintain the funding that we need from the state to actually support our classes. Am I correct in that assessment?
Well, of course, the state doesn't give us anything.
No, I know now they don't, but.
But the reason you'd want to grow, I think where you were headed is because if we go off of basic aid, then the base goes up and when we're receiving state funding, then we're receiving it at a higher rate.
I agree with that and I do know that, that property values are just plummeting in Orange County. I think it's the fourth largest, fourth fastest plummet of any, of any, the fourth county in decreasing property values. I think it follows Las Vegas, Phoenix, I think the inland empire in Orange County is the fourth that has plummeting property values. So, I think we are certainly very wise to make sure that we are increasing our enrollment so that if we lose basic aid, that we will be able to maintain our classes and pay our faculty and maintain the excellence that we've had in the past. I know Mayor Costa apparently lost their basic aid status and, isn't that true?
I don't think so. I, no, I don't think so.
Okay, well, so, I'm glad, glad to hear that and hopefully we will maintain our basic aid status. I'm just wondering, you know, the amount of money that we're allocating from our basic aid funds, for instance, to support ATAP and support other projects, are we able to pay these bills now because of, because of the recent calculations?
No, we, the board hasn't committed any more money than we've already received and are expecting to receive for this year. In fact, we have, if you look at your report, there are 23 million that has not been allocated. Now, of that, there's about, I think, 13 million that's going to have to be used for some construction projects that we have going on that the state's going to require that we have a match, so you haven't committed more than you have.
Good, and we need to maintain funds to certainly make sure that we could allocate money for our buildings that we're building on our campus to make sure that we have supplies and these buildings will be able to be opened.
Chancellor.
One thing I would just like to caution the board, particularly in response to Trustee Lang's question about the projections that we see in this agenda item is that these are exactly that, projections, and we don't know one way or the other as to what impact it would have due to home foreclosures and so forth because we really find out the exact value of the basic aid towards the end of the year, so we just need to keep that in mind.
Trustee Williams.
In light of the curfew, I move acceptance of the remaining reports and thank the constituent groups for their remaining reports so that we can move on. The meeting will adjourn in three minutes.
Is there a second to the motion to accept the rest of the reports?
Some.
That'll be a second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? I get two noes. All right, the rest of the reports are accepted with two no votes. We are at item eight, written reports. That was included, that was included in the motion? All right. We, all right, at this point, thank you all, we are adjourned, drive safe.